Can I say it's very disconcerting to have myself staring back at me from the screen in front of me. Before we start, can I draw your attention to the fire regulations on the screen behind me? Also, please, can we silence mobile phones? Okay, first item on the agenda is minutes. The minutes of the meeting which took place on 4th of February have been laid on the table for the last thirty minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of that meeting? Thank you very much. Apologies for absence. Emma, have there been any apologies?
Yes, Chairman, we have apologies from Stella Anderson-Payne and Simon Inchbold. Thank you.
Our declarations of interest. Have any members declared any interest before the meeting?
None before the meeting, Chairman.
councillor Molliner.
Membership of Hazelmead Town Council.
Thank you very much. And anybody else? No? Thank you very much. Questions from members of the public? Have there been any questions received?
None received, Chairman.
Thank you. Government guidance and legislation. Elizabeth, have there been any updates?
Thank you, Chairman. Members, there have been actually an extensive number of changes to government guidance and legislation since the last meeting of the committee, but in the interests of brevity, I shall identify the main headlines and I shall be preparing an update summary with the relevant links for members which we can circulate in the near future, which I think will be helpful. I can confirm that where relevant, the changes have been taken into account in the reports and updates and officers' assessments this evening. Firstly, taking effect today, actually, there's been a new general permitted development order which contains the permitted development and prior approval provisions. This is a consolidation order, so it's all the previous amendments brought together, and there have been some new provisions for permitted development. The Development Management Procedure Order, which is the legislation controlling validation, assessment and determination of applications, has also been revamped and consolidated. Importantly, there have been new statutory consultations confirmed and changed, and Surrey County Council has become the statutory consultee for surface water drainage and flooding and for SUD schemes. And there's been a new procedure introduced for the discharging of conditions. The environmental impact regulations have also been amended and the thresholds for requiring environmental impact assessment have been raised, so in the future, it's likely that larger developments are not likely to be EIA development in the way that they have been considered to be to date. The National Planning Policy Guidance has been updated, particularly in relation to infrastructure, SUDs and environmental impact assessment and housing needs, and the government's also published some technical space standards which we will be regarding as a material consideration, but we're not able to give it very much weight until it forms part of local plan policy. So I hope those headlines are helpful. Happy to answer any questions, but you might prefer to receive our note and then perhaps come back to me offline with any questions in detail. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. The quarterly appeals report, oh, just before we go on to the quarterly appeals report, can I introduce the new face on the bench here? Gary is a trainee in democratic services. Sorry, Paul, over to you.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chairman. Members will see that there are a total of eight, eight decisions in the quarter, of which you'll see that four of them relate to Barfold Farm. Of these eight decisions, five were dismissed and three were allowed. I'm not going to go through each decision in detail, the report is really for noting, and I'll take any questions on any of the, any of the appeal decisions. It's just worth noting that item one, which is Forestale for a detached dwelling, did actually follow on from a previous scheme for a single dwelling, which is also dismissed. This was for a slightly smaller scheme and has also been dismissed for similar reasons. On the Barfold Farm, I think members are very familiar with, with these appeals. You'll see that the inspector out of appeals A and B for new stabling did allow the appeals for the lesser scheme, which included the conversion of the, of the barn. You also see that item five, that in terms of the cost application by the appellantants, that was also, that was dismissed for the reasons given in the report. Thank you, Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, any questions? councillor Hess.
I'd be grateful if you could give us any guidance on lessons that we can identify from the appeals that were subsequently upheld, or indeed, if there are any particular lessons, if you can just give us a comment about the sort of quality of decision-making and any points you would wish to make that might help us to make sound or better decisions in the future. Thank you.
I think all the decisions that were, that were upheld by the inspector, these clearly relate to, two of which, I think relate to the Barfold Farm site, and one related, I believe, to, I think, to Meadow View, Pittworth Road, Chittingfold. I think, I think as councillor, we, we do give a strong case at appeal, and I think that you'll, in terms of certainly Barfold Farm, we did, I do feel we did present a very strong case to the inspector, and you'll see that after one of the appeals was, was dismissed, and be clear, when you're dealing with issues largely of planning judgment, the inspector like ourselves has to weigh up the pros and cons of development, and I think that was certainly the case with the Barfold Farm decisions. He felt the lesser scheme was more acceptable, and that is clearly sort of, so is reflected in the, in the cost decision, where he felt the council's case was, 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 was sound and justified its reasons for, for those decisions. So I think moving forward, I, I think we'll continue to give, give a strong case on behalf of the council.
So just to full up, you're happy with the quality of the decision-making? Good, thank you.
councillor Edwards.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, just going back to Barfold Farm, he's, if I remember rightly, he, Barfold Farm has had the appeal allowed for the conversion of the existing barn to loose boxes or stabling, and now he's put in another application. He got, he got permission because it was no longer used for agricultural purposes. Now, I understand he's put in another application for another barn, for agricultural purposes, which is absolutely amazing. I think perhaps what we should do, we should write to the planning inspectorate and ask them to explain why they allowed the change of use for an agricultural barn, which they said wasn't, it wasn't necessary, and now he's putting it for another agricultural barn. And we need to emphasise to the planning inspectorate that this is a waste of our time and taxpayers' money. He shouldn't be allowed to do this, and we should apply for costs if he takes us to appeal, because I'm fed up with him getting away with murder here. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. councillor Molliner.
Thank you, Chairman. I think I have to comment on councillor Hess's point. We don't live in a world of certainties, and the whole point of being on a planning committee is to exercise judgement, both as individuals and as a committee, and I think the comments made in the cost decision are a complete vindication of the fact that this council's judgement was that these were not acceptable proposals, but an inspector is entitled to literally look at the matter afresh and come to a different judgement. But we should not be in any way discouraged or intimidated because we happen to lose the occasional appeal when someone else, an inspector, comes to a different opinion on matters which are of judgement. I must admit, I sympathise with the sentiments councillor Edwards has expressed, and what I would actually urge is that we do write to the planning inspectorate and ask them what comments they have on a situation where, quite frankly, games are being clearly played, where the use of a barn is oscillating between being erected for agricultural or forestry purposes, then not used and converted, and then a fresh barn is sought, and ask them how many barns they would allow to be erected on this basis as their use oscillates between agricultural and forestry on the one hand and something else on the, on the other. And I think it's, I mean, the letter would need little thinking, but I think it's a serious question to ask. It is not in our interests or the planning inspectorate's interests for games to be played with the system, and it is possible that we should ask them if they would support a suggestion by us to the DCLG that this should be looked at, because it was obvious to me when looking at it that this was a possibility, and now it's come to pass and quite speedily. I think we have a fair point to make for the greater good of the planning system in the years to come. We're seeing what is frankly a technical abuse of the system, and I don't think we should just let it pass without reaction. The other point I would make on a separate matter is that, well, I appreciate that on item five, it's just been possible to draw our attention to the updates, but at the next Southern Area Planning Committee, no matter who is on it, it would be quite useful, I think, if we could have the brief, a brief written guidance sent out with the minutes, and then for Mrs Sims to talk us through it. I think they'd probably have more effect on our thinking and our understanding that way, because I've simply taken on board there have been changes, but frankly, I have got no idea what the implications are beyond the fact that the EIA is now going to be less likely than more. But to go back to my main point, I would like to take up councillor Edwards's dismay and do something constructive with it. And so if it was possible, I'm quite happy to put some effort in and to speak to Mr Hardwick afterwards, and perhaps get a letter drafted, which the committee could then see and if happy, agree to indoors.
Thank you, councillor Molliner. Do we think that this letter should come from head of planning or from the portfolio holder? What do you think, Brian? councillor Ishwood was next.
Thank you very much, indeed. Barfold Farm, they are playing games. When did this application hit the desk? Just before Easter. Some of the officers are away, naturally, therefore the workload builds up and up and up and up. But I do believe that Chichester have got a planning application which is extant in August this year for a barn on the other side of the farm, so that's three agricultural barns, and I do think that Waverley and Chichester need to get together and talk to the inspectorate as well. This is all part of a, I want to say, a game, conspiracy, call it what you like. I'm sorry, I feel quite strongly about Barfold Farm, as do other members of the planning committee. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Lee was next.
Yes, still on the subject of Barfold Farm, thank you. My memory is it's the barns are not the only thing that's been, we've had games. Haven't we also had issues of whether or not horses do or don't need to be near polo grounds, or do or don't need to have grooms having accommodation, and it would actually be jolly useful, I think, to go through the history of all the promises and arguments we've had, why this is a special circumstances, and how we usually, within six weeks, we've now heard that the, the reverse is true, and there's now a special circumstance, because I think when we come to the inevitable next half a dozen planning applications, it would be very useful to be able to show that assurances of the future needs and development of the site cannot be relied upon based on their past ability to predict their needs, shall we say.
councillor North.
Thank you. Having heard what's, what's been said, and it may be helpful, I think, perhaps, we have to realise that inspectorate is answerable to Secretary of State, and I would suggest that what we do is instruct the officers to prepare a letter with all this detail in it very clearly, including any possible neglect by the individual inspector in this case, and send it to Secretary of State and ask for an investigation. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Any more on this issue? councillor Heskey.
I'd just like to reinforce what councillor Molliner said, and just to say how well I thought he spoke with his customary insight and incisive view, and it's precisely this sort of analysis that the officers need to, I beg your pardon, that we on the committee need to have access to, or we need to stimulate from, from the officers, so that we can bring that degree of, forgive me if I'm using clumsy language, but bring that degree of reality, the reality that people got to live in these areas where these decisions are being made, but to bring that degree of reality face to face with, with planning law and planning procedure, and that's exactly the balance that we're here to provide. So I'd like to thank councillor Molliner absolutely for what he, for what he said, and to say that I believe absolutely that we must bring the possibly less informed in terms of the legal side of, of planning, but possibly the more informed in terms of actually having to live with these decisions and what's going on on the ground. Thank you.
One of the officers wants to comment.
Just to give you an update with regards to the prior approval applications that have been submitted on Barfold Farm, and both of those have been withdrawn by the applicant following advice from officers that they would be refused, and both the applications didn't meet the requirements of the legislation, and so they chose to withdraw them.
Just to confirm, Chairman, we will then draft a response on the grounds that, that our members have suggested to come from the portfolio holder, to reflect the views of the committee, and to be sent to the Secretary of State. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And on councillor Molliner's other point concerning the update to legislation, would I be right in thinking that all, all members of future planning committees will have to go through a training process, which I'm sure these new issues will be included within?
I do think, Chairman, that would be the best place to explore them and have the time to set them out and take members' questions in more detail, and that was what the intention was, to actually take all new members and existing members, if they're re-elected, to, to through these changes. Thank you, Chairman.
Sorry, if I could quickly come back on that. Your new members are not your problem, they have no, no bad habits to get out of, but you do need to think about those of us who've been doing it for a bit, and I think it would be very useful if you could put down in writing where things have changed, as that's the ones where we will get caught, caught out.
Thank you, Chair. Certainly going to do that anyway.
councillor King, no, finished, okay. Right, are we done on that item? Are you content to note the report?
Sorry, just, and could the draft letter be circulated to the committee before it goes?
Before it goes?
Yes.
Of course, yes. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We move on now to applications for planning permission. Seven one, site visits in the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting. These will be held on Tuesday the 2nd of June 2015 at a time to be agreed. Right, moving on to the planning applications, of which there is only one, B1. This is a non-public speaking item, it is on page 11 of the agenda, is a change of use and alterations to a barn and lean to, to provide a residential dwelling following demolition of existing outbuildings at Dockenfield Farm, Pit Lane, Frensham. Louise, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you, Chairman. Right, this application is for change of use and alterations to the existing barn to provide a five-bedroom dwelling, and the officer recommendation is for approval. Officers note that since the publication of the original report, concern has been raised by councillors regarding the connection of the barn to the main sewer. An additional condition is therefore recommended, which is not on the original report, requiring full details of the foul drainage to be submitted and approved prior to the commencement of the development. The site is located on the northern side of the street, where it adjoins Pit Lane in Dockenfield. The barn is part of the wider Dockenfield Farm complex, which consists of a number of redundant barns and outbuildings, and Dockenfield Barn House along with a residential annex. The barn which is subject to this application is in the centre of the site, and further unoccupied agricultural barns are located to the north, two linked agricultural barns are located immediately to the south, and they have been subject to a recent planning application which has been refused. Dockenfield Farmhouse and the associated annex are located further to the south. The buildings to the west have been separated from the Dockenfield Farm complex and now form Dockenfield Stud, which is an equestrian use of the land. Dockenfield cottages and down to the south-west are in residential use. The existing barn is unoccupied at present, but was previously used for stabling at ground floor with an ancillary four-bedroom flat and studio flat at first floor. This slide shows the existing elevations of the original barn with the later single-story addition which is attached. There are also two storage buildings which are linked by, by an arch, which would be removed as part of the application. These photographs show the existing barn and its single-story extension. This photograph shows the arch and storage sheds which are proposed to be removed, and this photograph shows the barn to the north and the equestrian building to the west, which is not part of the Dockenfield Farm. This is the proposed block plan, which shows the proposed residential curtilage outlined in red, with amenity space to the north and car parking in the shaded area to the east. Access to the building would be via the existing access running through the Dockenfield Farm As part of the alterations proposed, dormers would be added to the north and an additional roof addition, pitched roof here to the single-story extension with a balcony area between the two pitches. Fenestration would be added to all the elevations along with chimneys. The proposed accommodation would comprise a kitchen diner, living room, study, family room, WC, utility room and boot room at ground floor level. Five bedrooms and four bathrooms would be provided at first floor level. In relation to the determining issues for this application, the matters of principal technical judgement are the principle of the development, the loss of the agricultural use, highways, access and parking, contaminated land, biodiversity and the effects of the proposal on the SPAs and SAC. The matters of judgement are the impact on the countryside and the visual impact, including the impact on the AGLV, the impact on residential amenity and the standard of accommodation and provision of amenity space. As previously stated, the officer recommendation is for approval, and if members have any questions, they'll be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Members.
Thank you, Louise. This application is, as you said, for a third barn, having previously had applications for two others. I believe that you have on several occasions asked the agent for his view on whether this is the only application that's coming forward for this site, and you've not had any response from the agent.
The agent has indicated that it's likely that other barns may be converted on the site, but no further information has been provided to us.
May I continue, Chairman? So this property has been bought by a developer. It would appear that we may be commencing on a similar type of activity as Barfold Farm, but in a smaller position. I think that I would like to draw your attention to the page 21 where Dockenfield Parish Council, which asked me to call this in, has listed their concerns. He did attend a parish council meeting a little while ago and was quite vociferous, this is the owner. There, I've been particularly asked to draw your attention to the fact that the barn owls are nesting at the moment in the barn, and that obviously no activity could possibly occur until the, the chicks have hatched. Further than that, I think there's one or two other aspects in the report which should be noted, particularly the comment about the AGLV. This area is on Natural England's list for conversion into ANOB, and it has reached a stage where we have been told that it should be considered as AONB until Natural England either confirm that or reject it. So in fact, we are looking at intensification here in the AONB. I think those were the main points that I was asked to raise. Would you like me to read out the points of Dockenfield Farm, Dockenfield Parish Council made? Let's see them, fine, okay. And Dockenfield Parish Council would prefer this application to be rejected.
Thank you, councillor Adams. Anybody else? councillor Molliner.
Could I just ask the officers to comment on what seems to be a fairly relevant point? Are we in fact meant to treat this as land in the AONB?
The AONB boundary is outside of the application site, so we would consider this to just be within the AGLV.
Sorry, but you, you've heard what councillor Adams said. I mean, are you saying that he's wrong? Because what he was passing on was that this is on a list which should be, which could be turned into AONB at Natural England's instance, and apparently, if that's the case, we should treat it as AONB on the precautionary principle, I take it, until they say it isn't.
I think it's, it would be, I would warn you against giving it greater weight than it currently has, in a sense that it might be on a list of possible sites that may become AONB, however, it might not, and until it has been formally designated as AONB, I would be cautious about treating it as such.
No, I'm sorry, the advice we have from Natural England is that it should be treated as AONB until they say it may not be, because it has reached level four, or whatever it is, of the qualification as part of the extension of the Surrey Hills. This is not the only area, there are one or two other areas dotted along the north side of the Surrey Hills which are in the same situation, and it's been quite clearly stated that that is what we should do.
Elizabeth, are you ready to answer that?
Chairman, all I, all I would say is, I think it would be wise to give the proposal weight in accordance with its current designation. It is probably a material consideration that Natural England are considering it as AONB, but in terms of ensuring that you are giving adequate validity to any decision you make, I think you should be cautious about confirming in your minds it is AONB before that final confirmation's been made. So I understand the point that's being made, that it may well become AONB, but in terms of its current formal designation in planning terms, it is not that, and that has quite an important status, because once it becomes AONB, you have to treat it differently to AGLV because it does notch it up. I think the important point being, in terms of your local plan policy, which is C3, it is the same policy, and you're required to ask yourselves whether the proposal would cause harm to the, the character of the landscape, and I think I would advise that is, is the focus of your judgement tonight. Thank you very much, Chairman.
I'm seeing that councillor Molliner is itching to get in. Is it on that same point? Because I do have other councillors before you.
Well, what I was going to suggest is that I think I would be very grateful if officers could get, if you like, chapter and verse on this, and secondly, it does occur to me that visual impact is actually probably the key point on this, and I would personally prefer to defer this, so if we can hold a site visit on the 2nd of June and see for ourselves just what this impact is, because I do note, looking at the plans, that the degree of fenestration, certainly on the north-eastern end, is, shall we say, fairly dramatic, and I would like to have a better feel for the visual amenity aspect before I made up my mind, and if that also gave time for the officers to get complete clarity on just what the status of this land is, that might be helpful as well. status of this land is, that might be helpful as well.
Thank you. I have councillor Lee.
Thank you. On a sort of similar theme, really, it is with Barfield in mind, one is, Barfold's all right in mind, one is quite aware that if you imagine Barney as residential, then it is, becomes impossible to accept that Barn C, you know, doesn't change. I mean, you know, one can't possibly see how you could then refuse an application on Barn C, probably similarly Barn D. And so really, in terms of impact of this development, I wonder if officers have got any position, supposing an application had come forward to develop the entire site residentially, in, you know, in light of current policy, how averse would they have been likely to feel to that? And I don't, although I know Dockenfield, I don't know this particular site well, so I do support the view that we need a site visit, but, you know, what is actually, is this basically a redundant field with a whole series of redundant barns? Are we saying that the only acceptable position for this is that all these barns otherwise are going to rot away or be demolished? Just in terms of what I can imagine a planning inspector saying about that in the current climate, are you able to give me any sense of your response to that?
Okay, firstly, in relation to the redevelopment of the entire site, we have to obviously judge each application on its own merits, and we can't give you a view on an application which isn't before her, before us. In terms of this application, it's the reuse of one particular barn, and that is what we're considering here today. In relation to the wider use of the site, our agricultural consultants have been to site, and the site has been subdivided historically. It's now in a position where they don't feel that it's likely that agricultural use will come forward in the future. And that's not to say that it isn't suitable for some small agricultural uses, but they don't feel that it's likely that that would happen. And so that's been taken into consideration, where we've considered the loss of the agricultural use.
Thank you. But I think the point I'm making remains true, that the development of Barn E, in the context of what you're saying already, which is that this site is of limited agricultural value, you know, it is reasonable for us to draw conclusions. And that's not to say which way that conclusion makes us feel about the application, but it is reasonable to draw conclusions, that once Barn E is developed, that has a material likelihood that futures, future barns will also go to residential. Clearly, for the committee to make a decision how much they feel, but I personally do think that to therefore see the visual impact of the whole site, I would be strongly in favour of a site visit, not that I shall be on it, but there you go.
Councillor King.
Thank you very much, chairman. I'm surprised people won't know where it is, it's in the middle of nowhere, and that's part of my, where I'm coming from as well. I'm concerned about the amenity of residents, potential residents on this site, and I start off from the position of looking at the proposed development and its close proximity to Barn C. According to the plan we've got, it looks so close, it's unbelievable, but I cannot determine from the elevation diagrams what fenestration is on that side of the proposed development. Because I hope there's none, because it would be just awful if you could just...
Okay, there are windows at ground floor level, and there are also roof lights in the roof slope which would serve the first floor rooms upstairs. And the condition has been recommended, requiring those windows in the roof space to be obscure-glazed, to prevent sort of overlooking to any potential future residential use of Barn C and D.
Sorry, I was looking at the plans. Councillor Edwards is next.
I've got two questions here. The first question is, if we were to refuse this application on the assumption that it's going to be AONB, and the applicant went to appeal, and it wasn't AONB'd, would we be liable for costs? That's the first question.
Frankly, yes, I think we would be, because it's, although, as Elizabeth quite rightly said, it is a material consideration if Natural England are looking to change it to AONB, but at the moment it isn't. And therefore, if you determine it as being AONB planned, but it's not designated as such, we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to support that at an appeal.
My second question, looking at the curtilage of the property, it's a very large property. Now, if anybody else wanted, if they wanted to develop further barns, would this property be able to give any of its curtilage, any of its land to any of the other properties as part of their amenity space? Because it takes a large chunk out of the whole development there. And, you know, if they were going to develop Barn C, no, could they, because looking at the amenity space for the other barns, there wouldn't be much left to do the development.
If I could answer that, chairman, just to say that all that is before you tonight is an assessment of what is proposed and the amenity space available to it. If permission is granted, then, and the owner or the applicant has aspirations for other developments around it, they would have to make sure those developments are acceptable in their own right. If they have left inadequate space to serve those prospective dwellings, so be it, they may not be able to achieve permission on any other developments. Likewise, if in relation to the windows on this proposed development, there is prospective overlooking of other buildings, it may be that they are prejudicing the opportunity to convert those buildings later. But that is, that is the challenge that they have. All they're doing at the moment is asking you for permission for this one plot, and that is all you need really to take into consideration on that basis. Thank you very much.
Because looking at the plan, there's no way that the amenity of any of the properties would not be adversely affected if they decided to develop the other barns. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Isherwood.
Thank you very much, chairman. Just going to ask the point that Dockenfield Parish Council make, that the, it's not within the settlement boundary. Could I have the officer's view on?
The site isn't within the settlement boundary. However, national planning policy framework does allow for new dwellings in the countryside, providing they are appropriately reusing an existing barn or an existing building. And in our opinion, this is an appropriate reuse of the existing barn in this case.
Councillor Lee.
Just a quick point, I take it that we're not outside the appeal time at all, are we, for the refusal of Barn C and D anyway? So we don't yet know whether that's going to appeal, so, correct?
That's correct. That was refused six to eight weeks ago, I think, so they're still well within their six-month period to appeal.
Councillor Mulliner?
So can I ask a question? Could you remind us of the reasons for the refusal?
Barn C and D. First reason for refusal was because we didn't feel that it would constitute an appropriate reuse of the building, and that was because there was quite substantial alterations taking place to this barn, quite substantial extensions and changes, rather than reusing part of the existing structure that was there. And therefore, it did result in the new isolated home in the countryside, because it wasn't that appropriate reuse that is allowed under policy. The second reason for refusal was because there were windows in the southern elevation, which directly looked on to windows in Dockenfield Farmhouse, and so there was an unacceptable loss of privacy and overlooking to the Dockenfield Farmhouse. And the final reason for refusal was that the accommodation provided was inadequate, because it provided inadequate privacy, poor outlook, and unacceptable provision of amenity space. And all those reasons, all those points are really borne out of the fact that the, that building extends right up to the, extended right up to the boundary in almost every aspect, and so overlooked other boundaries in, to the north, west and south.
Thank you. Re, councillor Adams?
Thank you, chairman. I would like to emphasise that it would be a very good idea for anybody who's not aware of where the site is to go and have a look. It is in the middle of nowhere, almost midway between Dockenfield and Frensham. I think if, if a farmer bought it, he would not have much problem in actually acquiring the use of additional land all around, because there is plenty of land there which would, I'm sure, be able to be leased, so it could easily become a viable site for a farm. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to ask councillor Mulliner if he wanted to propose that we defer, and if so, have you got a second?
I do, so propose. Have I a second?
So do we have a, can you show me who is in favour of deferring this? That seems to be unanimous. Okay, thank you. In that case, the decision is deferred until after a site visit on June, whatever the date was, 5th, 2nd. Thank you very much. There are no items exempt, so that brings us to the end of the meeting. Thank you very much. Can I just say, as this is the last meeting of Southern Planning for this council, I've thoroughly enjoyed being your vice-chairman for the last year, and thank you all for your support and not shouting at me too much.